All right, good evening and welcome to the June 15, 2017, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Everyone is present except for Mr. Whitkis and Mr. Orsiani. Not sure if Mr. Whitkis is gonna be here tonight. Mr. Orsiani will be about ten minutes late. First thing on the agenda is the building inspector, so come on up.
Good evening, evening gentlemen.
As you know by now, we, the board, has asked the building inspector to make a monthly report on the construction at 92 North Main Street. To let the board know what's happening, if there's any issues or anything, so it's your nickel.
Okay, I went to 92 North Main Street today for an inspection on B unit. But Building C is the most, the one that's got the most done. They have thirty-two units painted, twenty-four units have kitchen and baths installed, and twelve of them, twelve units have complete lights inside and the wiring has completed. B building, frame is complete, rough wiring, plumbing is in inspected, and the top twelve units, two floors, is insulated, as far as air conditioning insulation. And A building, the frame is complete. And that's the end of my report for that.
Okay, no problems?
None whatsoever.
Everything is going the way it should be going?
I believe they're ahead of schedule.
Okay, and so as far as Building C, I know that there's still some concerns about the lottery and all, but September still looks like, September, October, looks like the timeframe. Okay, all right, anybody have anything, any questions? No, all right, that's great. And the only other thing too is just an update on what has transpired at 363 Prospect.
A violation notice was delivered today by Constable for the cars and vehicles on both properties.
Okay, and that's where it stands right now?
Yes.
All right, so now, Mr. Fitch, you can come, you can stay there, Mr. Fitch can come up here because the next thing involves... Please introduce yourself.
My name's John Fitch, I'm the manager of the West Boylston Municipal Light Plant.
Now, we have gotten, had some communications about this new project that you're gonna be doing, but it's still on the Tiverton Drive, the solar plant that's there now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I've had town council send us some information, you know, to review it. I've talked to the building inspector. Mr. Olson has, I've asked Mr. Olson to review it and all. The way I see it, me personally, and I'm gonna let the board, you know, talk for themselves, but the way I see it is, I don't see why you need a special permit from us. It seems like it's, you know, the project is already there, you just seem to be adding something to it. So I think it's just a matter of getting a building permit from the building inspector. So I'll let Mr. Olson go from there, get his thoughts on it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly inclined to, you know, defer to the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officers' interpretation on this, since this sort of is a case of first impression, i- if you like. I mean, it doesn't look like there's been a decision or an action, at least that I've seen yet, from the building department's office. That said, to try and be helpful here, I mean, I did certainly take a look at the town bylaws. I mean, there's a, there's one in particular that caught my eye that mentioned the special permit requirement for public utility facilities in town. But given what it appears that this project sort of entails, that it's, you're bringing on some additional, I guess, sort of battery, battery-based equipment, is my understanding?
It's not battery-based, it's gonna be a flywheel-based storage facility.
Okay, okay.
And if I can maybe cut to the chase?
Yeah, absolutely.
The reason why we're looking at getting it permitted faster, or sooner than later, was for a grant application that was due last week. That's passed, so I didn't submit anything related to permits or the permitting process in town. So I now have more time to do anything that we need to do, and I'm more than willing to go through the special permit process.
Yes.
Even if we were exempt, it's not a bad process. It's a very small project. I have an outline of it, if you wanna see what it looks like?
Sure. And if you, if you have an extra couple copies, if you could give them to Toby, please?
Okay, well, so what we have on the first page is the original site plan and asphalt for the existing solar site that's there. What you see in the bottom southern corner is a blue box. We want to put in a flywheel-based storage, which pictures on the second page.
I'm sorry, what, what based?
A flywheel-based.
Flywheel, okay, thank you.
So it's an energy storage device that's designed to take the energy essentially from the solar system, store it until I could use it when power's more expensive, basically, in the early evening. So it's a very small project, will encompass it, will extend the fence line to encompass it within the fenced area and come off the existing equipment, as far as electrical connection goes. All the capsules, the flywheels themselves are buried, there's sixteen of them. And so you see very little, you see very few things above grade. Basically, an inverter that's pad-mounted in that corner. So it's, again, it's a real small project, but we'll go through this, we'll go through the special permit process. It's not a, it's not that much of a big deal now that I've already submitted the grant paperwork.
Yeah, and I certainly, you know, appreciate your graciousness there and then sort of being willing to go through the process. And I mean, fundamentally, at least for me, the question I'm trying to answer is, is it necessary? And so again, just looking at the bylaw, it appears to me that it, that fundamentally, it's dealing with the use of a public utility facility, right? And to allow for that particular use, you know, on this site. Previously, I believe it was in 2009. I don't know if it was you specifically who went through the process at that time, but the municipal light plant did successfully, and was granted a special permit for that use. The way I look at your proposed plans here, as you've described them, it doesn't look like to me that the proposed use is changing in any way, in any shape. It doesn't look like there's buildings being proposed. It doesn't look like that there's any sort of substantive change to what the bill, to what the proposed use is going to change to, from what it currently is today. And I took a look at the, quickly, at the special permit that was granted in 2009. It didn't have any limitations on time, it didn't have any limitations on, it only applies to, you know, solar, a solar field type of, or solar panel type of technology, nothing like that. It seemed to be a fairly sort of, sort of broad, you know, approval for this, this type of use at this site. And so, again, my understa, I'm more than happy to defer to the zoning enforcement officers' interpretation on this, again, given that it is a sort of a first impression, but that's, that's my initial thought. Anyways, I don't know, Raj, you may have your opinion.
So the, my, I think, you know, the, what I'm thinking is, you know, yes, this is a existing or the special permit that was given earlier, but that's special permit for solar field. So this is, again, it's a connected, but it's, you are storing the energy over there. Is that differs? So that's where, do you really need a special permit? Again, you know, as Chris said, maybe I will leave it to the building inspector. Or do you think in the long run, the special permit will be helpful for, to clear all the, any, any and all other doubts? That's, that's...
You know, the one good thing about the special permit, it gives all the abutters a chance to come and speak their mind. And you have, is it Angel Brook across the street? I'd rather have them involved than not involved.
Yeah, so it'll be a, if you don't do it, if you get it, then it'll be a messy thing.
Well, if someone wants to question it, I'd rather...
That's, that's, that's what I was trying to say.
That was basically my thought too, is that I was looking at it as being a, we're talking to the municipal light plant about their project. That, that's what, that's what I was looking at is, is that you already had a special permit for the solar farm that basically you weren't doing, you weren't building another solar farm. You were just kind of like increasing the power of the one that already existed, you know, with these, with these flywheels. And so I didn't see it as being, you know, something that needed to come, you know, and get a special permit for, you know, to do that. Cause I looked at it and what Mr. Olson said, that special permit had no cutoff, you know? But like I said, I would, I'd like to hear from, from the building inspector to have, you know, what his thoughts are because, you know, he's the zoning enforcement officer. And I understand what you're saying about, about Angel Brook, about being concerned, but the thing is, is that I don't see this as being a really major, major project. I mean, it seems like, I mean, just by looking at the picture, going to that page, it seems like it's just something you're just gonna put in, you know, put into the ground and stuff, you know? So it doesn't seem like it's a major thing. So now, my only question was, you said something about getting...
A grant?
Grants. Now, is getting a grant, does that have a significant play on whether you have a special permit or not?
Only if I put something in there and I did, and I didn't include anything about permitting. So I took that piece out, granted, cause I knew we didn't have a decision yet on what process to go through. So rather than put it in, I took it out and left it vague and said that I would go through the permitting process mandated by the town. The, the reason why I thought originally I'd put that in the grant request is if I could say all I needed was a building permit, it might be more permit-ready, buildable project, it might be more apt than a grant. But since I took that out, that doesn't, that's not gonna go into their play.
Because I was gonna say, from what Mr. Olson said, you're correcting if I'm wrong, that if, if the per, if the permit that was issued has no specific deadline, you know, just open, then this could still apply to this.
So it clearly says, you know, this is, this is where I'm still, you know, not clear. The board finds and so notes that the construction of solar panel array is not detrimental to the neighborhood. So they, with this permit, this is what I'm reading, with this permit, they are allowed to have the solar panel. Solar panel and storage is, is two different things. They are not putting any, any additional solar panels.
Right.
So this is, this, they are going to store the energy over there.
Okay.
So is that two different things? So if someone comes in, someone makes a issue of it, then they may be in a, that's my, I feel like in a better of getting a special permit, again, to, for storage of the energy from that solar panels. That's, that's what I'm thinking, but I will, you know, it's up to the board, again, building inspector.
Okay.
This is my view, yeah.
All right, so now let's, let's hear your thoughts on this.
Okay, the setback is well over a hundred feet. I believe it's, it's still well over a hundred and twenty-five feet. There's no direct up butters, they're across the street. These units make no noise, they don't do anything, they're essentially a battery that, you know, holds electricity. I, I don't see them being at all detrimental to the neighborhood.
Would there be some kind of a fence? Or does it not need a fence around it? We would extend the existing fence chain link around it.
So in your, in your opinion, that it's not gonna be detrimental? And I mean, now, when we say the abutters are, you know, three hundred feet, okay? Is Angel Brook three hundred feet or more? Now, when you're, when you're saying this, is that the entrance? Because I know that to get into Angel Brook, you have to drive in, and probably before you get to the first building, it's more than three hundred feet, so...
I think, you know, they, when you say Angel Brook at the entrance point.
Right.
Not going up inside. So that's, I think that's how it...
Okay, but like you said, they're not gonna make any noise, you know? It's not gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood, it's not affecting anybody, you know? So I, I don't know, I just, you know, it's, you know, you're gonna try to help us make a decision. I mean, if you don't feel that he needs a special permit, he can just get a building permit from you to do it, and that's gonna suffice what you need to get this project done, then I would say, you know, me personally say, just let's do that.
I do have time to do both, it's not a big deal now.
Okay.
I, I really don't think it's necessary for such a small addition to this site.
It, it could be a small, but the, he, they will be storing electricity over there. So will that elec, that's the thing, that's electricity, how much the electricity they will be storing. Will that affect, will that storing of elec, electricity needs any permit? Am I correct? That's what I'm, you know? It's, again, you know, this, the, the special permit for solar panel, it does not say anything about storing of electricity.
Definitely doesn't.
So that's one other point.
It doesn't say that, it does say solar.
It says it's only solar. If you are going to put another additional one solar panel, so you may not need it. But storing, it's a very different use for me.
You wanna weigh in on this? I know you came in a little bit late.
And what would be the, Raj, if... It's just time-wise, correct, going through the permit?
That's not an issue.
It's not an issue, it was an issue prior?
It was an issue prior to June 9.
So it, wouldn't it be just to be...
One public hearing.
Did the permit and do it again?
One, one public hearing, that's it.
Yeah, just to be on the right, the safe side?
That's one, on the safer side.
Yeah, I'd probably agree with, just so there's nothing, months down the road that...
You'd rather, you'd rather give the folks that are abutters some chance to say something?
Right.
And they might bring something up that we don't, we haven't thought of.
But I think you're quite a distance from anybody. And I don't think that should be a problem.
The property line for Angel Brook does extend down even from the entrance, it comes close to the railroad track right there. And so it is, there is a property line, you know, it's, it's pretty far, but it's...
The only thing is, if anybody comes into town and is look, that has never been to the town and is looking for Angel Brook, they're not gonna find it.
Right.
You know, I mean, other than they're gonna see the sign, but then to get to the, actually, to get to it...
But you do know, Angel Brook, they are concerned of any project whichever goes close to them, they are concerned. They are, they keep their eye open.
And they're, they are our customers too.
Definitely.
We don't mind, it's not a, it's not a real... We have plenty of time now.
Yeah, do have the time. Okay, if somebody wants to make a motion, then...
Well, there's not, there's nothing to make a motion of, I suggest, I'm going to, I'm gonna follow the special permit process.
Okay, all right. If that's what you, you know, I still don't think you need it, but if you feel comfortable that that's what you wanna do, and the other members on the board feel that that's the way, you know, they'd like to see it done, and, you know, I can understand, you know, their reasoning about the Angel Brook and all of that. I'm just looking at it, you know, now that you showed me the plan, it doesn't look like it's... Anything, it's not gonna cause any noise, it's not gonna cause any discomfort. Probably people are gonna go by and say, oh my God, what is that, you know? Not even know what it is. Some people may not even recognize, they'll think, oh, that was there before.
There was no noise at all?
I've been told there's no noise, I'm gonna see a demonstration on Monday.
Is there any kind of a pamphlet for the next meeting?
Especially says zero noise, but I don't know, I see it, I wanna...
Okay. Maybe even just to bring that, where it says zero noise, so we can, if someone has a question, can show it to them.
All right, so the best thing to do is to go ahead and submit for a special permit for it?
Before that, you know, do you think we could get a town council advice?
We did.
Yes, I think she did write about it.
She sent the whole thing, you should have it in your packet.
It was an email chain.
I think that was on the slightly different issue.
It was about the...
Whether zoning in general was exempted.
Right, but I did specifically ask, told her that there was a, that they were looking, so she had all the emails that he had sent to us, that we sent to her. So I mean, that her answer was based on everything that she received from us. And that's why I asked Mr. Olson to kind of, to review it first. And I really didn't see any concerns, but, you know, and I, you know, I understand what Raj is saying. I understand what you're saying. You know, and, and if you're saying that you have plenty of time, then that's fine. The building inspector weighed in, his opinion, he felt that you just needed a building permit from him and, you know, you could've gone tomorrow, got the permit, and start it on Monday if you needed to. But, you know, if you wanna go through a special permit, that's fine.
We, we won't know about the grant until October, November timeframe, so we have plenty of time.
Now, is this something that has to be done before frost? Because this is going into the ground?
We wouldn't construct it till next spring.
Oh, till next spring, okay.
Again, plenty of time.
Yeah, so you're just trying to get everything prepared now, so that when next spring comes, you will just be ready to go?
It'll be ready and operational for the June peak, the June summer months.
All right, anybody else have anything?
I, I think, I agree with Nate's point, given that, I certainly don't see any harm in filing the application and going through the public hearing process.
I was just trying to make it easy, because it didn't seem to me, you know, the farm was already there, you were just adding these flywheels to it, I didn't see any, you know, any real concern of it, you know? So I just thought, you could just go to the building inspector, get a building permit and go, go your merry way.
That was our original intent, to get maybe a permit issued prior to submitting the grant, and then submit the grant with the permit, and then show up, almost, hate to use the word shovel-ready, but you basically show a permitted project, and maybe look a little bit better than the other applicants. That piece didn't get done, so I said, all right, well, let's, let's not worry about that, we have time. We look good as it, as it stands, even without the permits being in hand. I know other projects is this far along anyway, so we'll be fine.
So where will you be going to see how this works?
A webinar on Monday.
A webinar?
They're gonna show me a taped version of where it's installed in California, Hawaii, and the Philippines. Same Philippines, same Philippines. It's, it's an older technologies, flywheels, but it's, it matured and it has a four-hour runtime, and that's the unique or innovative feature of this particular flywheel. It can store energy for four hours and run when you need it. And I need, I need to, if I'm gonna store my energy and discharge, I need to discharge it over four hours to make it worthwhile.
Now, are you gonna be doing something like this with the solar farm on 140?
Probably not, too, this is, this 128 kilowatt is the size of this system. This is very small. The farm on Temple Street's very large, and nothing on Temple Street can penetrate the cap.
Okay.
So we would never, we could never build there. Cause the flywheel should be in the ground just for protection, because it is a spinning mass of metal and the earth is a natural...
See, I think they should send you to California, just to see, so you could actually see it.
I wanted to see the Hawaiian one, actually.
I'll go with them for verification purposes.
And I think, I think maybe somebody from the board might wanna go with you. I mean, I'd be willing to go just to carry a luggage, just, you know, just be able to go. One quick question before you leave. Are you pretty much done with the solar farm on 140?
We have to do some cleanup and then have a final inspection by DEP.
Okay.
The cleanup is taking a while, cause it, that, you wouldn't believe it, but it is still saturated there from the winter. And once it's dry, if I put a big piece of equipment on there, it's just gonna sink.
Right.
When it dries out a little bit more, we'll go fix the ruts, reseed it, get it inspected by DEP, then it will be done with the project.
And I'm, I'm assuming that that's why the front part has not been hot-topped?
Has not been cleaned up yet, correct.
Okay, all right, because I know that that was one of the things when you came originally, that I specifically asked that question, because that was the bus turnaround. And you said you were gonna take care of that, you were gonna, you know, hot-top it and, you know, so the bus would have an easier time, so I just wanted to make sure, cause I go by there every single day and I kind of figured that you were still working, that there was something still going on there, but I just wanted to make sure that, that that was it.
Okay, we're still gonna bring in loads of, some, some soil, just to fill in the gaps. So we'll wait to that, in the meantime, the bus is turning around in Fish and Wildlife's parking lot.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, okay, all right. Anybody have anything else for either the building inspector or for Mr. Fitch? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you in a couple months.
And get it, get it to us as soon as you can.
All right.
And when you see your web, when you have that webinar, if you could just send us an email on, and make sure that you CC the, the building inspector, just give us your thoughts, you know, about, you know, what you thought and, you know, and whatever information you have, you know, just so that we have something to see before you submit, you know?
Or even something for the public hearing, you can see some questions.
Yeah, so...
I see that you said that made available for everybody to watch as well.
Okay.
Cause you can see the specs, and the specs say zero, but until you, you know it's a spinning mass of metal.
Right.
So you kinda, kinda think there's gotta be something.
Well, and if there's a video and stuff, make sure that, you know, we can get it, you know, especially the building inspector, because he's gonna have to issue a, a building permit for it, so I'm sure he'd be interested. I don't think you've ever, is this, this has never been done on the East Coast?
It's fir, it'll be first on the East Coast.
First on the East Coast, oh gosh, we're first.
First.
Right, West Boylston's making a name for itself. It must be because of you, John.
Okay, they approached us. We said yes, so that counts.
Okay, I mean, going from Philippines to Hawaii to California, and then skipping everybody else and coming right to West Boylston, Massachusetts, that's, that's an accomplishment as far as I'm concerned, so, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, building inspector.
Have a good day.
Yep. Next thing on the agenda, we're not gonna go in order, minutes of the May 18th, 2017. Okay, I had Toby, I had Toby get an extra copy. So I'll grab one from Toby. Okay, anybody have anything?
I did have one typo that I found, one of mine.
Tyto, Toby, typo!
On page three, I'm sorry, Toby. On page three, the, the title there regarding, I think that should be 363?
Oh, the address.
The address, okay.
That's a big mistake.
If, are there any other comments?
No, I don't have any other comments.
If, if no other comments, then I motion to accept the meeting minutes for May 18th, 2017, as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So Toby, if we can just make that change, leave it in the box for Raj. Get it to the town clerk. Okay, all right. Okay, all right. 40B binder, okay? I have created a 40B binder, okay? It has to do with the training that I went to in March. There was a, a new handout, handbook that was printed, and they made some suggestions that, you know, everybody on the board, every member should have one and a copy. And so I went further and went and took everything that I thought would be necessary, so that if anybody had any questions about anything to do with the 40B or what they needed to do, that it would be in one binder. So basically, I'll pass this around, but it starts out, there's eight tabs. The first tab is gonna be the 40B, the handbook. The second one is the 760 CMR 56, the comprehensive permit, low and moderate income. It's a, it's from... It's a, it's from the, it's a document that tells everything about the 40Bs, you know, the definitions and everything. The thing, the next one is the comprehensive permit projects. It has to do with the subsidized housing inventory. That is done by DHCD. The third, the fourth tab is gonna be the Town of West Boylston, our comprehensive permit rules and regulations. Tab five is gonna be the Town of West Boylston subsidized housing, the inventory list that we get in November that tells us, you know, where we stand. Tab six is the Town of West Boylston general land area minimum analysis. That has to do with the, if we're within the 1.5 percentage, okay? The next one is the town, is the housing production plan. And the last tab is the Town of West Boylston, the comprehensive fees. So I'll pass this book around.
So you didn't make copy for this?
You'll be getting a copy. I'm just, I just want everybody to see what has done.
Songsbook, yeah.
So, okay. Now, talking about the fees, okay? One thing that I talked to some other boards about, about their, about their fees and got a conversation with Toby, now I'm having a conversation with the board. We have a list of, we sent out the email to the various towns when we were thinking about having the training for the 40Bs. And we sent out a list, and there was a list of the towns that were gonna be on there. And of course, I can never find it when I need it.
Yeah, that's kind of in our FYI pile over there.
So anyways, there's, I think, 12 towns. I did have it. Yeah, okay. So the towns were Berlin, this is what we sent the letters out when we were asking about the 40B training, was Berlin, Bolton, Boylston, Clinton, Holden, Hudson, Lancaster, Knottville, Paxton, Princeton, Rutland, Shrewsbury and Sterling. So Toby and I are gonna be in the process of contacting these towns to see what they charge for fees. You know, what they charge for comprehensive permit, what they charge for special permit, what they charge for variance, okay? To see where we are. Now, my thought is, I looked at them and I think I would like to see us raise the fees $50 across the board. I don't think that's an excessive amount. I think that we, if we...
So do we have to go to public hearing yet?
Well, I'm waiting for town council to send me information. We may just have to collect all the information and just provide it to the board of selectmen and that they would make the decision on whether this is gonna be, you know, okay or not, okay? So that's the plan for that, okay? I know that this has been talked about before. It's, it's about simplifying the filing forms. Now, I know that Raj, when he first got onto the planning board, they, you had done something with their site plan review. So I'm just wondering if it's possible, if you could kind of look at our...
Well, we can ask.
And see what we can do as far as simplifying.
Yeah, they were just getting an update from the building inspector, but...
Because I've been approached by Karen Paray. That's not right.
Dr. Tajin wanted to, to have some time to speak.
Okay.
Since he is on the agenda, so...
Well, he's really not on the agenda. The only thing that was on the agenda was to talk to the building inspector about what was going on, on the, on the project. It had nothing to, we did not invite you, I mean, so...
I was under the impression I was to come. I spoke to...
No, no. We invited you last month and you never came.
There was a reason for that, and I think I'm entitled to speak, and I think you should know. You can't cover this up this way. That was no way to do this to me. I'm coming here prepared to present important information to this ZBA that I think you should know.
Well, okay, I'm gonna invite you, tell me why you didn't come last month.
All these sudden minutes.
No, tell me why you did not come last month. We sent, we called you and we sent an email to your house. You never showed up. You never even responded to anything, so, you know.
This is a cover-up to do this.
No, it's not a cover-up.
Yes, it is.
No, it isn't. This is an information... Excuse me, with all due respect, all it was, was an information from the building inspector to give to us. That's it, has nothing else. Everything else that has to do with this is in the building inspector's hands.
It's different from what the building...
It has nothing to do with the ZBA anymore. We were just asking for information because you did not, we had, when you came to us in February, we gave you the author, the priority, and we gave you the guidance, said, okay, we'll give you a certain amount of time. You didn't do that. You, the vehicles are still there. So now we've turned it over, hold on now, with all due respect, we turned it over to the, to the building inspector. It's now in his hands, okay? We're out of it. All I was asking was just an information of what was going on. That's it. Otherwise, it's, it's up to the building. If you have any quims or quaws, you need to take it up with the building inspector and not with the ZBA.
The ZBA should know. The ZBA should know. The planning board should know. I followed through every aspect, I was thanked on this. You should know. And if you wanna cover it up, this is a problem.
It's not a cover-up. You, you were invited last month and you did not come.
And I didn't come because I didn't get the information properly and I requested a...
Toby called, she called you on the phone and she sent you an email.
I didn't get the email.
Well, you know, then that's not...
And as a result, I asked for a meeting for the, in front of the town administrator before the end of, before the end of May, before June 1st. And that meeting discussed many of the factors that you should know, or it's, it's gonna go to a high level. But I think for, to try and do what you just did to me is a big mistake.
I know, that's not right.
You, you tried to cover up stuff, which you should not be doing. I would think that you as a ZBA should try and understand and know the facts. Is this being recorded?
Yes, it does.
That's ideal, too. Usually there's a mistake that doesn't get recorded. Therefore, I say clearly, there's criminal involvement here now, according to the building inspector. There's a lot of dwell. I was told clearly, I called the town administrator this morning, and she said, yes, you're on the agenda. That's no way to treat somebody.
And I, and I talked to the, to the town administrator and I told her that we were just asking for an update from the building inspector. That, that's all we were asking for. If we wanted, if we were gonna have you come to talk to us, we would have invited you beforehand.
So you, even if you talk, there is nothing gonna be changed because the decision is made during last week, last meeting, I'm sorry. So there won't be any change.
I'm going to request a meeting before the select.
That's a different board. That's a different board.
If I have to.
Yes.
But I also wanted on record, this does not look good, what you just did to me. Because I'm here, I'm crippled, I'm trying to give you the facts and information you should know. This is now in a criminal involvement. And you should understand the decisions you're making here. We're trying to cover it up.
We're making no decisions. All we asked for was information on what was happening. That's it. That's not, that's not, that's not covering up anything. It's in the hands of the building inspector, the enforcement officer, because you are in violation.
You haven't understood the situation. You don't understand the problem.
Dr. Tajin.
You're looking at a committee. This is what you want.
First of all, why don't you have a seat?
I'll have a seat.
Okay, have a seat.
Where?
Right there. Just have a seat right there. I don't want you to fall down and get hurt or anything.
Sure.
Just have a seat, okay?
I'll go get my rest.
Back in, hold on, let me just tell you. Back in February, okay? Just hear me out now, please, sir, okay? I'm, I'm trying to be very respectful as I can, okay? Back in February, this board, we did, we thought we were doing you a favor. We gave you three months, 90 days, to take care of the situation with the vehicles. We even asked the building inspector, because he didn't have to agree to it. He did agree to it. He stopped the fines and said, wait until the 90 days. The 90 days have already passed. The vehicles have been moved from one place to another, but you still had vehicle, unauthorized vehicles in both locations, okay? We sent an email and we called you. I apologize if you didn't get any of that, but there's not much that I can do about that. You did not come. We had a conversation with the building inspector. It's now in his hands. It's not a ZBA issue anymore. It's a building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, it's his responsibility now. So now, all I did today was put it on the agenda to ask him what was going on, to keep us abreast, just like the construction of 92 North Main Street. I don't see anybody else here, any of the abunis here, asking about that. All we're doing is asking information to keep us informed of what's going on. That's not covering up anything.
It is.
No, it's not. If you have an issue, then you need to take it up with the building inspector. And if you can't, and if you're not happy with that, then you can go talk to the town administrator and ask her to set up an appointment to go talk to the board of selectmen and let them come back and tell me that I'm wrong and that I have to, you know, do what I need to do. But until then, it's not in our hands anymore, sir, okay? So from now, we're gonna move on with the meeting, because we're done, okay? I'm not gonna take any more from anything, from, from you, with all due respect, because we're, we're finished. It's not in our hands no more. It's now in the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, okay? So it's over, so.
It isn't over.
It is over as far as I'm concerned, unless the town administrator, board of selectmen tell me it's not.
Can I?
Yep, go ahead.
So... So the, the thing, the last ZBA meeting, you are on the agenda. So the last ZBA meeting, so the building inspector was here and the issue was discussed. After discussion, the board voted the decision. So now, those things are closed. The decision is closed. The building inspector sent you a letter, violation letter. So now, the ZBA has nothing to do. We cannot reopen this. I hope you understand that. We cannot reopen this in this meeting in today. You, there should be a different...
Wait, and here's, here's what, here's what I'm gonna do, okay? Toby, when you get these, when you make, correct the minutes for May 18th, okay? Make, please call Dr. Tajin, send him an email and make sure that you are able to talk to him, you know, that communicate. Give him a copy of these minutes and highlight page three. Everything that says under business continued, Mr. Hergit and Cheryl Keating regarding Dr. Tajin, 363 Prospect Street. And that way, Dr. Tajin will have a record of what was discussed at that meeting. Now, I know for a fact that that meeting was on, was on TV, okay? So you'll have a copy, you'll see what was said. There's no cover-up. Like I said, it's now...
You'll find out that there's no cover-up.
There isn't.
Now, I'm just gonna say another thing. I met with the town administrator and Nancy Lucia and requested that the building inspector be there with Cheryl. We had an initial meeting and the facts started coming up. And then the, they said, Nancy Lucia said, what we shall do is put these minutes into executive session. Executive session is a little bit cover-up kind of talk, but that's the only thing. So the, the town administrator excused the building inspector and Cheryl. And she said, we will continue this from here. And I did. And we presented it and the town administrator said she would cooperate in presenting this information. And that is what has been done. Now, when you did this and I spent all this time trying to get here under good faith. And when I spoke to the town administrator this morning, I said, I'm coming to the ZBA meeting because this building inspector has placed me in criminal, a criminal complaint.
Okay.
Now...
And I'm gonna, and if that's how you feel, that, no, that's fine and dandy. The thing is, is that you keep saying the building inspector, the building inspector, okay? That has nothing to do with this board. We don't control the building inspector. That's the board of selectmen and the town administrator. That's the people that you should be talking to. As far as this board is concerned, you know, and I'm hoping that the rest of the board agrees with me, we have nothing to do. All we did was, we asked for information of what's, because of the meeting that we had last month and what was discussed, that you were invited to but didn't come. And you're saying that you didn't get any word, okay? I, I don't know what to say about that. All I did was ask him to just give us a, a report of what was going on. That's it. Otherwise, it's in his ballpark.
All right. I'd like to make a request, Raj. You're on the, uh, select board. You're on the planning board and you're also on the TV. I would like to make a request that I can present to the selectmen, not in closed session, openly, the facts that were to be presented at this meeting and were not allowed. Is this possible, that I can meet before the selectmen as quick as possible?
I think it's not up to me, so you may have to go, when it comes to the select board, you may have to go to the select board chairman.
Right.
Ask for, ask for the chairman or ask for the secretary, Nancy Lucia, request and to be, put you in the agenda. It's not me.
In the past, I asked to go before the select board.
That's up to the chairman.
Yeah, and they suggested we go into executive session. And I said, I'm not going in executive session. I feel this the public should know and understand. And if it means going that way, but I'm not going in executive session because I consider that a little bit on the cover-up type of approach. This should be publicly known to the Town of West Boylston. And I spent a lot of time bringing my notes and information here to try and explain to you. You don't wanna hear, there's nothing I can do about it. But I think the select board of the Town of West Boylston, if they have the final ultimate authority, let it be publicly said that it be done and not any executive session meeting.
So that's up to them, you know? Up to that board, you need to go through the channel. That channel is, Dr. the, Nancy Lucia is the secretary for the select board of the town. So you may have to talk to the higher and ask her to get the permission to put you on the agenda. So that's how it has to be.
This was once a civil matter. It's a criminal matter in the federal courts and state courts. If the, the selectmen of this town has got to know and understand what's going on.
Agree, but this board, this board, we have nothing to do. You know, that's, yeah, you, you have the right. You can request for a, request to put you, put you on the agenda. That, you need to ask for the different place.
I, I, I agree with Raj. With all due respect to you, Dr. Tajin, I, I genuinely believe with, agree with, with the fellow board members here that this is, it's no longer a ZBA matter. It's not that we don't, you know, it, it's not that we're trying to, to, to cause you, you trouble or concern here. It's that, it's, it's not an issue for us. And I, I think, I feel with that, I think we've talked about this more than enough, more than enough, and we should probably just move on.
That's right.
Yeah, the, the hearing was open and it's closed. We voted on it. We sent the decision. So we cannot reopen this.
And I'll make sure that Toby gets you a copy of last month's meeting minutes so that you can see exactly what was discussed. And then as far as the board of selectmen, you need to contact the board of selectmen and ask them to get on their agenda. But this no longer has anything to do with the ZBA.
Yeah. Can I suggest, there is only one simple correction.
Yep.
Maybe we can give that copy right now.
All right, I'll give you the copy right now.
Do you have to change the...
Just 363.
Yeah, just change... Yeah, just change that word.
I did.
That's all.
Just change it to three sixty-three.
Give that to him and he's.
This is a copy of the minutes that we just approved, okay? And this is everything that was discussed about your, about the situation with you, okay? So, you can bring that to the board, but it has nothing to do with us anymore.
And I'll say one more time, I am not meeting in executive sessions. I wanna meet with the television camera so that the entire town will know that we're dealing with criminal problems.
And that will be totally up to the board of selectmen and the town administrator. That has nothing to do with us, okay? I hope you have a wonderful evening, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay, um, Toby.
Yes.
Um, that piece of paper that you need us to sign.
Oh, okay.
Once he here, we get that form that, you know, we have to sign for, for signature. You know, like you guys, comes from the town.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah, you'll have to call him. That needs to come, to sign it. Okay. Sign your name. Any other miscellaneous mail? Or any other thing, other than this that we just, that we're signing now? Is there anything else?
I think I just, I put some FYI things there, like about, um, Nancy had sent out a couple of emails just about, um.
Oh, yeah, but that has, that has nothing to do with us.
Yeah, it's not, you know.
Um, just a couple of things underneath the, um, the section that says information acted upon, you know, any information not received before the prior, okay? One thing that has happened is that we are now going to, um, back in November, DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, sends out a subsidized housing inventory biennial update. And basically what it does, it tells you, you know, all the, um, housing, subsidized housing inventory. And one thing that's not on there is the village at Oakdale, which is not the village at Oakdale, it's now Sajid Gardens. But anyways, they don't have anything listed. They have zero. So, we now have a letter, it's in your package, that, um.
It should be up a small pile, I have, relates to, uh, you know, I think it's under that Burton sheet.
Okay, I moved everything around. Okay. So, basically, um, I, I talked to the, um, the housing specialist, and, no, that's not.
She said it was under Burton.
Yeah, that pile is the, um, North Main Street stuff.
What's the heading of it? What's the heading of it, Toby?
What's that?
The heading?
Well, there was a letter from Burton Engineering. It's, it's in that pile. It should be in that pile.
Anyways.
In the pile of Burton.
Yeah.
Together.
Anyways, basically, what we're gonna do is, we're sending a letter to DHCD. I got the copies of the building permits for Building A, B, and C over at ninety-two North Main Street, and, um, sending them a copy of those and a copy of a comprehensive permit, requesting that those eighty units now be put onto the, um, onto the housing inventory list. So, that'll go out, certified mail. Toby will send that out either tomorrow or Monday, and, um, hopefully, 'cause right now, we're at five point one-three percent, and hopefully, that'll bring us those eighty units, because they're all rentals, so that'll all count. That hopefully will bring us up to about seven, seven and a half, maybe even a little bit more. So, that'll be one less thing that we're gonna have to worry about. So, that's a good thing. Um, the other thing too is Afro Terrace, um, as everybody knows, Mr. Ali turned everything over to Afro Terrace to the group. So, now they're responsible. The only thing that was still outstanding was the ASBelt. The Conservation Commission has now received a letter from Burton Engineering stating that the letter that Mr. Ali did present to them a month or so ago, they actually signed and approved. So, the ASBelt, the new ASBelt is now official. And what's gonna happen is, at the COMCOM's next meeting, I talked to the Chair, Mr. Chase, they will go ahead and review it and approve it, and they will then issue a certificate of compliance for that ASBelt. Once that happens, they will send a copy of the, uh, certificate of compliance, Burton's letter, and the ASBelt, the ASBelt. And as soon as we get that, we'll fax everything over to Afro Terrace, to their management company, and that'll be a done deal, okay? All right. Okay, uh, the list that the, um, Planning Board sent out about bylaws that was, what, two months ago? Okay. All right. So, I'm still working on the accessory apartment bylaw. I pretty much got it, you know, together. I just need to put it in its proper order. And hopefully, I'm hoping that by our next meeting next month, I will have something. I will send it out to you before the meeting, so that next meeting, we'll be able to discuss it and see. And then we'll send it on to the Planning Board. I know that they, it's not a rush thing, 'cause they've got a whole bunch of things that they're gonna be working on. But that's something that I suggested that I would take, I would take care of. So, that's taken care of. Okay. Anybody have anything, any future agenda items or any reports that they wanna make? Raj, anything from FISB?
Uh, yeah. FISB, last night in our, the FISB Board met.
Yep.
And then, uh, they did, there were three firms came in for an interview for the OPM.
Final mission.
OPM for the Senior Center. And the board selected the current OPM, who's doing at the police station, Tony, Tony Dulucio's.
Cardinal.
Cardinal constructions. So, that's the update.
And I was at that meeting, and, you know, the three candidates, one of them was, you know, did a good job with Tony and this other one, particular one, were neck and neck.
Yep.
But the board decided to go with, with Tony because he does, he's doing a good job at the police station, so they just felt that, you know, and that's fine, you know? Don't have any cringe of cause with that, okay? The other thing too is, we just found out that, um, an affordable apartment, two-bedroom, two-bath apartment at Sajid Gardens, affordable, is gonna be fifteen hundred and thirty dollars a month for rent. I know, that's what I said too.
Did you put that on the form?
Yeah, I know. 'Cause they take eighty percent of the medium, and then, that comes out to like fifty-eight thousand or something. Then they divide that by twelve, and then they deduct thirty-three percent of that, and it comes out to fifteen hundred and thirty dollars. We did get an email, Affordable Housing Trust has been back and forth. We did get, there was an email that was sent from Susan Conley from MHP. She agreed with that. It has a lot to do with the way HUD does everything, and I tried to go on their website.
What happens if he didn't get enough rental?
Then he'll, then more than likely, what I would think would happen is, is he'd probably have to lower the rents.
Yeah.
You know?
So, is that affordable for the town? Is that his price for that number that we asked for? Or no, that's just for the?
For an affordable unit. The twenty affordable units.
Right, that's for me, for that.
For that, for those twenty units, the price is gonna be fifteen hundred and thirty.
So, if it is, if it is not affordable, how much is the place?
Right, that's.
It's probably, I would think it's probably gonna be about seventeen hundred. You know? And it did, now, if you think about it, look at what a three-bedroom is gonna be, you know? So, a three-bedroom market value, I'm probably, I'm, I'm thinking it's gonna be two thousand. Now, I know that, that PBD Management Company, they're the ones that are gonna do the manage, they're gonna manage the problem, and also, they're gonna be the ones that are gonna do the, um, the, um.
Rentals.
The lottery. They're still working with Mr. Ali and Dean Harrison. They haven't signed a contract yet. So, the final numbers have not been able to been, have not come out yet, until that's all done. The way it looks right now, we thought the lottery was gonna be this month. It doesn't look like it's gonna be until next month. But like the building inspector said, it looks like Building C will still be ready for, for September. Okay? Anything else? Anybody got anything else?
Nope. Does that lock that pricing for that, at fifteen, for that affordable housing? Can it ever be changed? Do you know?
Well, there'll be, there might come down a little bit because of, because of.
Does that lock it in for that person? They win the lottery, they're locked in?
Yeah, I believe so. I, I won't know anything until.
Okay.
No, until the management company comes back and gives us.
Or can they save for a year now? Can they jack it up to their golden price?
That I'm not sure of. That's something that the management company would have to tell us. Okay. The only other thing, okay? Our next scheduled ZBA meeting is July twentieth. Are you traveling? That you know of?
I don't know until the Friday of.
Okay. All right.
The following week.
So, that'll be the next, the next meeting, and.
I do my best.
No, I, I understand, you know, like, okay, the only.
We do, uh, can I?
Yep, go ahead.
So, we do need to find out what's the, what's up with Charlie.
Yep, Toby will, Toby will try to contact Charlie tomorrow to find out what happened to him today and, um, make sure that, you know, the information that, that we got.
Yeah, I mean, he had the whole, uh, folder in there, so.
Okay.
Can you call or email? Can you call to see what's going on?
Oh, yeah. No, I tried his house phone. His house phone didn't have a voicemail set up, so I left a message on his cell phone. And, you know, usually, I would hear from him. Although, um, I didn't check the mailbox to see if he took the paperwork or anything. Maybe he came by, but.
Now, do you always put it in animal control?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, now Raj, just, is that public knowledge?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, we'll talk about this out.
Yeah.
Okay. The last thing is the reorganization of the ZBA, okay? I, I'm just gonna put this out. Last month, I was asked if I would stay on for another year. I'm willing to do that unless somebody else wants to be the Chair. I still have, there's still a lot of things that I'd like to see accomplished. If people's schedules are gonna, you know, minds more flexible than I think the three of these put together. So, it's, it's up to you guys and what you wanna do.
So, can I make a motion to nominate Chris Olson to be the Chair? I want to hear from him.
Okay.
I was gonna say, does Chris want that, or?
No.
I mean, if you don't feel comfortable.
No, I'm fine with the.
No, no, I understand, I understand. But I'm just saying, if he doesn't, if he doesn't feel comfortable, I mean, I know he's got a lot of things going on at work and stuff, and he just came on board within the last several months.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I, I've been conflicted about it. I mean, to, to be honest, um, but honestly, I'm, I'm willing to do what I think.
Hold on, before then, I know, before then.
Yeah.
I made the motion. Anyone second?
Everybody second.
Second, okay.
Now, the discussion.
Okay.
If you are caught.
It's, wha, wha, what are we comfortable with? What are you comfortable with? What are you comfortable with? I mean.
As long as I'm at the bottom chair, that's fine. That's what I'm comfortable with.
You know, like, we had a conversation, and you said that, you know, you thought that maybe you'd wanna just kind of, and I said, "Okay, fine, I'd be willing to stay on." But with you staying, being Vice Chair.
Yeah.
And Raj staying on as the clerk, if he so chooses, um, unless.
No, no, no.
Okay, so, if you don't feel comfortable right now.
Uh, see, I, I can go either way.
Let's make a decision.
Well, Chris, I mean, what is your, I mean, you can go either way, but what is your really?
So, then we, we need to take a vote, I guess.
Yeah, but, Chris, what's your real feeling of it? I mean, do you, is it going to be? So, do we need a vote from every?
Yeah.
No, I mean, would be.
With all four is fine. It's just a simple.
On the one hand, to your point, Dave, I, I hesitate in that, I think you're right. I, I can't spend having nearly the amount of time at Town Hall that you do to do what it is that you do for, for the Chair.
Okay.
Uh, in, in the Chair position and all that that means. Now, but on the other side, to, to answer your question honestly, um, again, it's, to, to me, it comes down to, I'm still willing to, um, you know, sort of step up to that position if, if fellow board members, you know, feel that, um, that, that, you know, that that's, um, that that's in order.
So, let me just ask you this. Would you be, hearing what you have just said, would you be more comfortable with me staying on, giving you more time to get into this, stay on as the Vice Chair? And then just next year, you would be the Chair?
I'm comfortable with that, sure.
Okay. Does anybody have a?
Raj? No, I made a motion that, that's all.
Even, so let me, let me ask the question, maybe, maybe it's not.
So, my understanding from Chris is, you know, he's comfortable as a Chair, as a Vice Chair. But I made the motion.
So, my other question would be, is, could we do this maybe not a year? Or could we do it in six months? Or it has to be every year?
No, it's only one time a year.
One time a year? Okay, I just wanted to get the clarification.
It's usually done after the June election.
But I just wanted to clarify that. Um, I, it's totally up to you guys to whatever way you wanna go. I'm happy with, uh, I think you both have done an excellent job. But.
So, do you wanna keep it? You need Chair, you need Vice Chair?
Let's take a vote, let's see.
All in favor of Chris being the Chair?
Aye.
Yeah, I, I.
Okay, you got it? If you, if you want it to.
You didn't say anything, he didn't say anything. You got a vote on it, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So, Toby, send out an email. That, okay? Hang on, before we do that. Okay, now.
What was the vote? What was the vote?
Go ahead.
So, if we go this route, could, I'm gonna ask Dave, can you be involved if you want to?
That's the next step.
Well, I want, no, what I'm saying is, I wanna make sure that if Chris has gone to be the.
I think that's critical.
This is critical, and this is really what I wanna know before, I wanna say before the vote. I wanna make sure there's no, if, to keep you as into the game that you have been, I think is crucial for us, because I don't think anybody has that other type of a.
I completely agree.
If you're the Vice, are you still willing to do that much work? Or is it going to change your mind?
It's not gonna change my mind. The only thing that I would say about that is, is that there's, this is just my opinion, there's a lot of decisions that I made now, that being the Vice Chair, you know, I would definitely have to get a hold of him first, which is not across.
Right, and that's, I think that's my thing, is, is it going to, um, there's, is it still going to be a team? Or is it going to be, um, a riff in the, in the middle, I guess?
So, the thing is, in our, we are men, there's, you know, let's see for maybe a, if, if this doesn't work out, we can always revisit this.
Yeah, but you should have asked me.
We can always revisit, right?
Only in a year?
No, anytime.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was just that we can't revisit it for a whole nother year.
Unless the person, you know, who says, you know, "I don't want to be," then yes, right?
I, um, I, I'm not entirely certain, to be honest.
Yeah, I don't know.
So if, I would be okay with that if we can get clarification that that is the way it can go. Because I don't wanna make a vote today. Yeah, why don't we table it till next week? Yes. If you can find out that...
Right, okay, let's do that.
It's you didn't...
Okay, you know, hold on, this, already voted on it, so we need to do something on that. What do we do now? So do I have to make a motion again?
Yeah, to rescind the vote, yes.
How would that works?
Yeah. You know how, so we had a meeting last time where there was a public hearing that we closed and then reopened?
Is this applied the same way? I have no idea.
Yeah, it's, it's the same meeting. We're still talking about the same issue.
So I have to make a motion to rescind that, my earlier motion?
Right.
But the vote, everyone voted?
Did everybody vote?
No.
I don't know that everybody... No, only you and I. Those two did not vote.
He also said yes.
No, I don't...
He said yes.
In fairness, yeah, when I said yes, I was answering the question, would I be willing?
Yes.
It wasn't a vote. Still, the vote was just you and I, but then...
Yeah, no, they didn't vote.
No, and I still had some questions really to, you know, to get answered on that. I think it's a, I personally think it's a big, you know, between all of us here.
No, 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 I'm fine with the David Fimia, that's not the...
No, no, not even about that, I just wanna know.
He has a Chair, I have no problem with that. But in fairness, you know, take turns, that's all.
Absolutely, no, 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 I am not against that either. I just, I think the big thing was, can, like you said, you could revisit it, but we didn't know if that's...
Yeah.
Really can happen.
Right.
I think we just need an answer on that and then we take a vote next, what's on? In a joint.
Twenty.
Yeah, that's kind of me.
And I'm very happy to make a vote on it as long as we have the correct answers. We talked about it and we make, you know, obviously you can sleep on it for, and...
Yeah. See, my, this is how I would get this, okay? Everybody has a busy life, you know? Everybody deals with different things, okay? The three of yous have full-time jobs, I don't, okay? I do this because I feel that it's important to keep everybody abreast of what's going on and to go to these other meetings and get information so that I can bring it to you, okay? The thing is, it's easy when you're the Chair to do those kind of things, okay? If you, right now, if you didn't feel comfortable enough to do that, that's fine. I respect that. And I would take this on, you know, for another year. There's a few more things that I'd like to see Toby and I get done, you know? There's some things that are coming up that I'd like to be, you know, where I am. I mean, I have dealings with the Town Administrator, I have dealings with Affordable Housing, I have dealings with, with the Building Inspector. My, you know, I should probably have a space here for as much time as I spend here.
You don't have to be a Chair to have a space. You can do all those things without it.
But see, the thing is, but it's easy.
Anyway, that's fine enough, whatever is fine.
Just a discussion.
So now, basically, let's just take the vote, rescind the vote, okay?
Well, there was no.
Okay, there's no vote. Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna table this till next month and then we'll hear from Mr. Olson.
I think I need to, I did make a motion, so I need to withdraw my motion at least.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to withdraw my earlier motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Alright, did you get that, Toby?
Can I have it?
Yeah, he thinks so.
So we're still on with the discussion, correct? Can I have one more question to it?
Yeah.
Is if, so your last comment about that you go to the Boards, which I think we all thank you to take the time that you do. If you were Vice, could you not do the same thing? Would it not be, is it, I guess, is it not allowed?
Oh, no, it's, it's allowed. The thing is, is that I would have...
Oh, okay. Oh, but...
This could be placed in a debate tonight.
Oh, okay, yeah, I can just fix that one inch and then this is all set. Okay, thanks.
Okay, now I just wanted to make sure that you're...
Let's just table it till next month.
No, absolutely.
Charlie will be here.
Yeah.
We can take it up next month. That'll be, that'll be one of the things that are on, be on our agenda. It'll be the last item on the agenda.
Fair enough.
Toby, is there anything else that we need to know about or anything else that's going on?
Um, I don't think so. What is the agenda? Do they have anything left on here? Oh, simplification of filing forms?
Yeah, we already took care of that.
Oh, what did we say? I didn't get that.
Everybody's gonna look at it and we're gonna try to make a decision, you know, on what is it. Like I asked Raj, because I know that he did such a wonderful job with the Planning Board when they were asking about this, it was the same thing with you, right?
Yeah, not much of it. I didn't make forms, but it didn't go through the final...
The thing from Amherst was fantastic. I mean, I was...
So, yeah.
So, you know, if we can come up with that. And like I said, Toby and I are gonna be working on this thing for the fees. I don't think fifty dollars is gonna be that much. I would be shocked if anybody achieved that.
And that was, also that fifty dollar that you're talking about?
Yeah.
That is, having looked at the other ten or twelve...
Those towns that I mentioned.
Yep.
Because what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take this, this form, this fee form right here. And we're gonna make copies and we're gonna highlight, get rid of those totals. And then on the top, we'll have Town of Berlin, Town of Borlston. Each one will have its own, whatever information Toby gets or vocalists get, we'll write in here. Once we get everything, we'll spring everything to the Board. The Board will look at it. By that time, we'll have an answer if, whether we can do it ourselves or whether it has to go to the Board of Selectmen. If it has to go to the Board of Selectmen, then we'll just handle, hand the package to Raj. Raj can present it to the Board of Selectmen. I will be at their meeting like I'm always there. If there's any questions or any concerns, they can be more than free to ask.
What are the procedures? It's fine.
So that's basically it, okay? So with everything being done, next meeting is July twentieth. Hopefully Mr. Wood, this will be here, we can discuss, we can table that. And I think that's it, okay? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.